Stevens Point area, League of Women Voters, Candidates Forum, recorded March 16, 2016.
We'll get started with the second section now of the forum, please. This is for school board candidates. And I just want to do a few housekeeping kinds of things, you know, make sure the cellphones are off. Thank the Community Access TV for taping today. That will be reshown on Channel 984. We have little yellow slips that tell you all the dates and times when it will be reshown, so pick one of those up, share it with your neighbors and friends. If you want to check the Wisconsin League website, here's a website address where you can find out more about the Wisconsin Supreme Court candidates. Those will be at our tables here and the candidates' table outside the room. If you want to find out more about League, our membership brochures look like this. We have business cards that have our website on and contact information, so that's just a little bit to get started. Make sure your cellphones are turned off, please. No taping of the forum, please, because you can watch it if you want to on Community Access TV. And at this point, I'll turn over the forum to Tina Peters, who's going to moderate this section on the school board. Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to have all of you here. Hello and welcome to the forum for the Stevens Point Public School District School Board Candidates. My name is Tina Peters. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the Stevens Point area, and I'm happy to moderate this forum. With the addition of the new Point of Discovery Charter School, the Stevens Point area Public School District includes 14 schools, with an annual budget of $101,995,778. School Board members are paid $3,780 per year. The school board is composed of nine members that serve three-year terms. For the April 5 election, there are five candidates running for four open seats: three three-year terms and one one-year term. The three top vote-getters will serve three-year terms; the fourth top vote-getter will serve the one-year term. Angel Faxon has dropped out of the race. There will still be six names on the ballot, and we'd like to remind you to not vote for Ms. Faxon. Voters can vote for up to three candidates. The candidates in alphabetical order are Amy Daly, Jeff Ebel, Dan Kontos, Barb Portson, and Rory Swomey. For this forum, three candidates are present. Barb Portson cannot attend. She had travel plans made before the date of the forum was set. Her written campaign materials are on the table outside of the pinerie room. Rory Swomey teaches on Wednesday nights. He had scheduled someone to take his class for him tonight, but that person made other arrangements and couldn't take the class, and when Rory found out, it was too late for him to make other arrangements. In order to provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to this community, we have established and reviewed the format, time, and terms for this forum with the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and one and a half minutes to respond to each question. The order of speaking will be rotated for each question. I will repeat the question as requested. The timers are located in the front of the candidates' table. Excuse me. A green card will be held up when their time starts; a yellow card indicates 30 seconds remain; and the red card means that time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentence, then please stop, and the next candidate will begin. Candidates are asked to keep their remarks germane to the questions and fair to the participants. The moderator reserves the right to interrupt to ensure that these ground rules are observed. For the audience, please motion to one of the ushers, and if the ushers would raise their hands. We've got three. If you need an index card and a pencil if you'd like to submit a question for the candidates. Candidates will respond first to questions submitted by the League and then questions from the audience. The League reserves the right to review and screen questions for relevance and to avoid duplication. After the forum, you are invited to meet with the candidates as well. The order for responding to questions has been selected earlier. It actually hasn't. I'm going to do it now, and will be rotated for each question. The order will be Dan Kontos, Jeff Ebel, and Amy Daly. We now begin with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate. We will begin with Dan Kontos.
Thank you. As Tina said, my name is Dan Kontos. I am, first, I want to thank you all for coming out here on this cold and windy night to come and listen to us. It's kind of nice, and thank the League for inviting us out here. I like to say that I'm a full-time husband and father, and on the side, I work for Portage County, where I am currently the chief deputy at the sheriff's office. I'm one of those people that has been in public service all of my life since I started my adult life in 1985, always working in government in one fashion or another, trying to fill my spare time with public service, whether it's been on the volunteer fire department, whether it's working for the Red Cross, those kinds of things. Lately, I was honored to be able to be a citizen member on the school board's Policy and Legislative Committee, where I currently serve and enjoy that quite a bit. And I have come to really understand that the school district is a very important part of our community, but very poorly understood. It has a lot of impact on us, not only on the children, but also on the community itself, our ability to be able to educate our kids, to prepare them for the future, but also to attract people to the community. And we heard before from the earlier forum on how we're looking for opportunities to bring people and bring families in, and having a vibrant world-class school district really helps us to do that. I think I've got a unique set of skills based on my background that maybe some other people don't have, and it's not that it's better than anyone. If you look at the school board, there are nine of us on the board, or nine positions on the board to be filled. And every once in a while, we select some new people, like tools in a toolbox. I think I've got a unique set of skills. It is a good tool to fit in that toolbox. You don't want all the same kind of people. You don't want nine of me on the board. I'll be the first one to admit that. But I think that my set of skills, along with those of the folks that are sitting here with me and others that are on the board right now, really would mesh well together, and I think I can lend a lot of my skills and experience to the board. And I'd appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Mr. Ebel?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Ebel. Thank you all for coming out tonight, by the way. I am just finishing up my first three-year term on the school board, and I am running for the next term. I am from Stevens Point. I was born and raised here, so I am really a Towny. My family has been here for a long, long time, in the county and in the area. And I was very fortunate to have been born here, and I decided this is a great place to live and to raise a family. My wife is with me, and we have two children that we raised in the community. I was a business owner. I had my own business in the Stevens Point area. I am also involved very much in the community. I do a lot of community service. I served on a number of boards for nonprofit organizations in the community. I am currently a counselor for SCORE, which is the Service Corps of Retired Executives, and I provide free counseling as a volunteer to businesses, providing guidance in starting and surviving in a business. I am also involved with Justice Works. I served on the board for Justice Works for a number of years and helped create the Shifting Gears Community Bike Shop, and then my work on the school board as well. I am also involved in economic development in this community. I'm currently part of a partnership that helps businesses get financed, upstart businesses. So I'm very much concerned about the development of the community, about the growth of the community. And because of my involvement with business, I realize that in order to have a growing community and a profitable community, prosperous community, you need a well-educated community as well. So it's a chicken-and-egg thing. If you want people to stick around, you want to grow the community, you are going to need a good education system as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Daly?
Good evening. Again, thanks for coming out. It wasn't the most beautiful day, but we're getting there. It'll be summer soon. My name is Amy Daly. I am a single mother of a kindergartner who attends McKinley. And for a girl, little girl, who just starts kindergarten, it is wonderful. I felt even before she started school that it was important for me to be an active part of her education. So, starting in 2014, I assumed the role as a school board secretary. And I worked there until December, when I resigned purely to run for the school board position. I've lived in Stevens Point for nine years, and I have an education and career and a full background in finance and banking. I currently work for Associated Bank. Considering my knowledge and background in finance, I believe I'd be beneficial to the school and the district and the committee, uh, community, sorry, considering what's ahead of us with potential government cutbacks and financial issues that are ahead of us. Having served as a board secretary, I'm positioned to have less of what they tend to call a honeymoon period. I've been included in the closed sessions. I've attended all of the board meetings, the majority of the committee meetings, and have a really good working relationship with the administration, as well as the current board members. I'm familiar with the ins and outs of the board and the district. So basically, I have 21 months of school board training as being an impartial person before even being elected. Sorry, I have to take a breath. As a parent, I want what all parents want for their children. A big part of that desire is equality, well-rounded education, and for my child to be successful. And that goes for all of our children. If they all succeed, we're a better community for it. To continue to offer that to our children, we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to set a budget and stick to it and keep moving our district forward.
Thank you. We'll move into the questions from the League. And we will begin the answers with Jeff Ebel and move on to Amy Daly and then Dan Kontos. The budget is a high priority for the school district. What other priorities would you see a need to be addressed during the next 12 months? Mr. Ebel?
Yes, the budget is a big priority, and we do have a big budget. And it becomes more and more of a challenge with some of the moves that are made down in Madison that affect us in a very substantial way. And I hope that our community is aware of, you know, what is happening and the situation that it puts school boards, particularly this Stevens Point area Public School District, in being able to meet its obligations and then to provide the level of education services that we expect and that we want for our community. Other big items, many, many, many of the things that we want to do, they're tied to dollars. I mean, that really does determine what we can and cannot do. We have talked about our infrastructure, about our investment, our fixed assets in the community that do need repair. They don't last forever, and it's going to take some money to keep those in order, in good working order. In order for us to provide that 21st century education for our students, we do need investments in technology. That's important, and that's also driven by money. We are people-to-person organization. We have teachers that are in classrooms that deal directly with our students. And they also expect the standard of living that needs to be met, and they've had their pay curtailed quite a bit in light of what's been happening in Madison. So most of the things that are confronting us right now are all pretty much tied to money.
Thank you. Ms. Daly?
I completely agree with Jeff. We have just over $100 million a year for our budget. Last year for the 2000, or this year for the 2015-16, we maxed out our levy at the 5.52 percent. If we want any more than that, we need to come up with it from someplace. Forty-nine percent of our budget is from the state, and that is getting sucked away from us more and more every year. If we need to be active in Madison, we need to have a voice and a presence and make it known that we're not happy with this. If we can be responsible with our spending, we can hopefully get a pay plan in place. We can work towards the Consolidated Task Force recommendations, albeit not all of them, because that's $100 million right there. But we can work towards upkeep and better infrastructure to build our schools and continue providing the world-class education that our students receive currently.
Thank you. Mr. Kontos?
You know, being on the tail end of this question is kind of tough because they, both the other candidates are absolutely correct. The budget is going to be a big thing for us. Looking at our financial structure, looking at the revenues and expenses, and looking at our own internal efficiencies and the way we do things are going to be critical for us moving into future. The budget and the dollars that are provided to the district really do intermix with just about everything that we do, and there are not a lot of things that you can do that aren't tied in one way or another, some fashion or another, to the budget. So we really have to look at opportunities to be able to use that budget as efficiently and as effectively as we can. So as each decision comes along that the board needs to make, we need to look at our priorities and set what our priorities are in our own minds. The education of the children being first, how does it affect them? How do these budgetary decisions that we're making affect that education? And whether it's anything from recruitment and retention of world-class educators and staff to making sure that our infrastructure is kept up, making sure that we're doing things as safely as we can for our children, looking at trying to market the district so that we help the community and we can attract people into the community, those are important things for us. But they are all tied into the budget. So how can we do things outside of the budget? We need to make sure that we're doing things as effectively as we can, making sure that we are keeping that first and foremost goal in our minds, and that is improving the educational system for our children.
All right. Thank you. For the next question, we will begin with Amy Daly, move on to Dan Kontos, and then to Jeff Ebel. Here's the question. Thank you. State law places a strict limit on funds available for public school districts. Recent reports suggest our school district is struggling financially and is operating on a razor's edge. Many districts around us and across the state have passed one or more operating referendums. What would be your position on pursuing an operating referendum? Ms. Daly?
Unfortunately, it's kind of what the education system has come to. Money is being taken away. The cost of living is going up. We have demands to be met to continue to serve our pupils and our employees. I hope we can work something out and not have to go to a referendum. However, the reality is, it's quite possible. And I'm not going to say I'm in support of that, because I'm really not. But if it's what we need to do besides start cutting things, because that would be our other option, is we are going to start cutting athletics and we're going to start cutting other things so that we can continue to afford the education our students deserve, then it would really be up to the taxpayers if that's something they would want to do. I would personally try and come up with every other way before doing that, but it is a possibility.
Thank you. Mr. Kontos?
You know, having two children in the school district myself, I understand the importance of having all the resources that we need to make sure that we've got that world-class school district that we all desire to have. But at the same time, I'm also a taxpayer. And when I open up my tax bill every year, I see how much money is going to the school district. Now, I don't have any desire to pay any more taxes, I'll be honest with you, but I also have the desire to make sure that our children are being educated in the best way that we can. So I think what we need to do is, before we start making a decision right here and right now on whether or not a referendum is necessary, that we take a long-term view at the district. And I'm not talking three to five years. I'm talking 10 to 20 years. Where do we want to go? How do we want to get there? What kind of resources will we need to get there? And how do we have a steady, measured, long-term view of where we want to take this educational system to? Because we're not just doing things in the short term here. We're actually building a system that's going to be a legacy for someone else to take and carry the torch later on. So in order to do that, we need to know where we're going to go. Once we know that, we can start looking at where can we raise revenues? Where can we cut expenses? Where can we maximize efficiencies? And if the math just doesn't work, then that means that we need to put together a plan, and we need to educate the public as far as what we think the best course of action for us is as far as a referendum is concerned. And if that is the case, as the representatives of the people of the district who would be elected to sit on a board, it would be incumbent on us to make sure that we present a good case to the people and we let them decide. After all, that's what the legislature has provided for, so that's what we would do. But before we get there, we need to have a plan first.
Thank you. Mr. Ebel?
I think it's sad that school districts have been put in this position. There are two ways that we can generate more revenue to meet the demands of the 21st century education system. The state has abdicated its responsibility to adequately fund public education. We have, like I said, two ways. You can either get it from the state or you can go and ask your community through referendum. And it's a very uncomfortable position to be put in. Again, I'm from this area. I understand the sensibilities of the people in the community and that it's very difficult to go out and ask them to pay more for these services. It's hard. And I agree with both of our candidates up here that you need to know clearly what it is you intend to do and how you intend to do it. And the community, the school district, needs to be united in its front if there is ever going to be that move to move into a referendum, to present a referendum. And again, I am loath to even mention that because we have a lot of work to do before we would even present that opportunity to the community. But knowing the community as I do, if you make your case, well, they're very supportive.
All right. Thank you. For the next question, we will begin with Mr. Kontos, move to Mr. Ebel, and then on to Ms. Daly. Question is, recent state laws have resulted in some of our local private schools receiving vouchers with money from our private public schools. I'll say that one more time. Recent state laws have resulted in some of our local private schools receiving vouchers with money from our public schools. Do you support the voucher system as it exists? And what is your opinion of publicly funding private schools with taxpayer dollars? Please explain.
You know, local school districts were originally intended to be controlled locally. That's why you have local boards that run those districts. And the constraints and some of the demands that have been put on the district really do stretch us quite a bit. The public money that goes to pay for the private school vouchers is a drain on the system, little known fact that the district actually was able to raise your taxes so that some of those monies could be transferred this year to those private schools. Philosophically, much of the chagrin of some of my conservative friends, I don't support school vouchers. I don't think that it is appropriate philosophically for the district to require people to pay taxes just so that we can change the direction of where that money goes to and redistribute it to private schools, which were started, which were founded, with the premise that they would be paying for their own expenses and having the students pay their way. I don't think philosophically that I am comfortable with taking money from taxpayers and turning around and giving it to other schools. Having said that, and while as a board we can certainly advocate for change, and we certainly should, we should be able to educate our legislators down in Madison as to what the impacts of these things are. Realistically, though, we have to understand that this is the world that we live in at this point in time, so we need to be able to prepare for that. But no, I don't like the idea of transferring money to private schools. I don't think that is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Ebel?
I am not supportive of the voucher program as it exists today, and I don't know of any model that I would necessarily support at this time, which may be ironic, seeing I'm a graduate of Pacheli High School, by the way. But we paid our tuition. We paid our own tuition. That was our choice. That was our choice, and we didn't expect the taxpayers to support our own personal choice. That's how I feel about it.
Ms. Daly?
I also am not in support of the current status of the voucher system. Statistically, the students that are going to voucher schools, in our area at least, would have gone whether or not there was a voucher system. They are members of that organization. Their families are members of that organization. They were going to go whether or not they had a voucher. And that's money that our district is losing that could be put into our funding and what our students need. Instead, tax dollars are being reallocated to private organizations, and I just don't support that. The initial idea of vouchers helping with inner-city schools, I can get behind that, but when their pure intent is to use the voucher to go to a school that they had already intended to go to, that kind of rubs me the wrong way, and I just don't support that.
Thank you. We will now move on to questions from the audience. Again, each speaker will have a minute and a half to respond to each question. We will continue until 7:15. The first audience question is, the current school board gave themselves an average grade of C on their overall performance. What would you do to improve that grade? And we'll start with Mr. Ebel.
Yes, I was very, I was involved with that, as a matter of fact. I filled out one of the evaluations. I think that the board was very honest in its self-evaluation. There are a lot of things that we can do to improve the way we function as a board. And I think by taking an evaluation is a good step in that direction. Let's find out where our weaknesses are. Let's find out what our strengths are. Focus on continuing to build our strengths, and let's do something about those areas that we have weakness in. And one of the areas that we definitely could improve on is actually doing the work that we're supposed to be doing, which is to set a vision for the community. And I have been working with another board member on actually creating a program, a process, whereby we can annually update and renew our strategic plan for the school district. And that, as Dan had mentioned earlier, it's a five, it's a 10-year plan. But it's a plan that needs to be a living plan. It's not something you write once and then you put it in the drawer. It needs to be used, it needs to be referred to, and it needs to be updated on an annual basis regardless of who's on the board. So developing and implementing a process is extremely important in that step, and that's a huge step forward for our board to be able to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Daly?
I read the evaluation, and having sat at the board table for just shy of two years with the members who had taken that survey, I found it to be quite honest and accurate as to what I had experienced sitting there. The good news is that this year, there'll be four new faces at that, potentially, sorry, Jeff. I mean, there's a potential to have a big change on our board, and that can completely change the grade. We could take the survey then next year and have it be a B. And any level of improvement from a C is always good. We want our kids to get good grades, we should have a board that's getting good grades also. I think that a big thing is kindness, being kind to one another. We want our kids to be kind to each other, and we should lead by an example, and I think that would also be a big step in helping our board's grade go up.
Thank you. Mr. Kontos?
I kind of like the idea of having some music while I was talking.
Wasn't sure we were supposed to dance?
You know, looking at what the board does, and unlike the folks that are in here who have an interest in the school board, most people just kind of let the school board run in the background, and only when there's a problem or something's brought up in the media do they really pay attention. Having paid attention to the board for the last couple of years particularly, I see a lot of the really good things the board is doing, and some of the things that people in the district are doing, and some of the wonderful outcomes that we have because of the processes that have been set up. I think the board, when they did their evaluation, was, they were not only honest, but I also think they had high expectations for themselves, and they know that they can do things differently. I don't want to look back, I'd like to look forward, and as Amy said, new faces on the board this year, that's a reality, and with every election, at least a third of the board is going to change, or have the opportunity to change. And as new people come in, and as people who have been on the board for a while grow in their position, we learn, and we do things better each and every time. And we should have those high standards, but we should also understand that every opportunity to bring people onto the board is another opportunity for us to learn from those who have been there before us, and to build on that and do things better in the future. I think we can do that. I don't think that that's a problem at all, especially serving with a couple of folks like this on the board. Really looking forward to that.
The next question. "Do you advise that K-12 teachers or administrators are armed with guns while in school buildings?" Begin with Ms. Daly.
It's really, as a parent, seeing this, what happens in schools is heartbreaking. I don't want it to happen in our school, but I feel that schools have the obligation to be prepared for it. I don't agree with everyone having a gun, but we do have security officers in our schools who do have access to a gun in a locked cabinet should it be needed. We have recently put in place the Alice program, and that is, it's not teaching our children to hide so much, but to counter and fight back. And through the training that we took at the board meeting, when faced, when an attacker generally is faced with somebody coming at them that is not part of their plan, they're expecting people to run and hide, their plan gets dramatically changed, and that could be a really big effective counterattack for somebody with a gun without you actually needing a gun. But I don't support everyone having a gun in K-12.
Mr. Kontos?
Well, you know, having spent 22 years in the military and now a couple of decades in law enforcement, firearms are just a natural part of my life every day. I'm not afraid of firearms, I'm not afraid of firearms held by people who are properly trained and vetted. At the same time, I can't name one of the several teachers who are friends of mine who would even want to do that. It seems that when this issue comes up, you have both camps, and they try to make the facts fit their own predetermined concept of how life should be. So pro-gun advocates say that everyone should be armed in the schools, arm a couple of the kids too, that'd be good, you know, a couple of them are good shots. The anti-gun advocates don't want firearms within three miles of the school, a completely free, you know, school zone, don't even let people fly overhead with firearms. You know, there are things that we can do where we can counter the safety threats that are an unfortunate reality in our school without firearms. At the same time, it is a simple fact that firearms in the hands of trained people, a select few trained people, may be the appropriate path. We put armed law enforcement officers in our schools now. We have parents who are law enforcement officers who carry firearms in the schools now. It is certainly something that's worth debate and worth discussion, but I don't think there's a good black and white answer for that. And it certainly is something, that's an issue I wouldn't shy away from just because of who I am, but certainly I don't leap to one side or the other on that. I think there are some good compromises we could come up with, and in the end, we can come up with a good solution.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ebel?
Well, I think that more guns to address a gun situation is oversimplifying the problem. I think too, there are probably hundreds of different ways that we could address the issue, and this happens to be just one of them that was presented, which, by the way, I don't agree with. Teachers are, that is not their job, you know, and I agree with Mr. Kontos here that, you know, guns should be in the hands of trained professionals that know how to handle them, and teachers should teach, and they shouldn't have to worry about that. I think that if there are problems that are coming up, I think we need to look at the problem with an open mind and look for the best possible solution, and not just jump to maybe what might be the easiest, or the simplest, or the most obvious solution. So that's how I feel about that.
All right. Thank you. The next question. "Are you familiar with the Consolidated Task Force for the public schools, and do you support grade realignment in this district?" We'll begin with Mr. Kontos.
Yes, I'm familiar with the Consolidated Task Force report, specifically grade realignment. When you look at how we are doing things, we've kind of grown into the system that we have right now. And if you look at other districts in the way that, I don't want to say we should be like everybody else, but the way it is usually done, the middle school, high school, elementary school model, where we're going to take those students in the sixth grade and move them up a step, and then we're going to take all the students we would normally consider to be high school students and put them into high school together, freshman through senior, seems to make a lot of sense to me. The opportunities that are there based on the development of the students at the stage they're in really makes a lot of sense to be grouped with like-type of students. And it allows us to be more efficient in the way we deliver some of those opportunities to those students by putting them together, so we don't have to cross schools in order to provide that. At the same time, there is a cost to doing that, and the decision that we make on whether or not we're going to do grade realignment really is tied into the budget as well. So with the cost that it's going to take to do that, while I support the move in general, I think that the timing for that move and the work that needs to be done and all the costs that is associated with that really needs to be examined at, you know, given the particulars of that point in time, on whether or not we can afford to do that, and whether there are things that we can do as intermediate steps to make that happen.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ebel?
And again, I agree with Mr. Kontos, that as far as the grade realignment goes, me personally, I guess I would support what the district and what the teachers and the professionals that deal with this would recommend. I have learned a lot through the process, listening to both sides of the argument, and I've heard some great arguments to, you know, realign the grades in the community. But again, I mean, these all come with a price tag, and it was a pretty hefty price tag. And one of my school board members asked a very good question, is, and I think, you know, the number was 25 million or something, is that the best use of money for the district? Is there something else that might, we might have better use for that type of dollars rather than grade realignment? And I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but it was an intriguing question, and it got me thinking about it. But I would be very supportive of what the professionals in our school district would recommend and would think that would work best for the students in our community.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Daly?
I do support the grade realignment idea. The maturity levels, for somebody who's in ninth grade and they're still in a junior high, middle school setting, they're taking classes and moving towards college prep even at that point, and so it would make more sense to have them in the high school setting, where they can have that change of classes and the interactions with people moving up and going on the same path they are rather than the middle school setting, junior high. The Consolidated Task Force, they did wonderful work. We had a great group of community members, and they came together, and they worked really hard, and they gave up a lot of time and energy and thought into their recommendations for the board to review. The price tag along with that is a lot. There's $35 million on one of the options, and the other option, I believe, was $97 million. That's a lot of money, and that's a lot of money that could be put into other things, not saying these items don't need to be done, but we would need to definitely start someplace and pick and choose on what's needed and what we can afford to do, always keeping the fiscally responsible idea in mind, and then move forward. But if it does come time and there is money for the realignment, I would support that.
All right. Thank you. Well, seeing that it is 7:15, we will move into the closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statement, and we'll begin with Amy Daly.
Well, first, I'd love to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. It was an honor to sit up here with Dan and Jeff, and I like that we are really on the same page of a lot of things, and it reaffirms that we have common ideas and goals as to how to move the district forward with the potential large change that could happen with our board come April 5th. I have a lot to offer the district. As a parent of a student, I know I will be in the community for at least 12 years, and I have no intention of moving before or after that. I have 10 years of banking and finance experience, and coming into budget concerns, needing to figure out where money's coming and going from, I believe I can really offer a lot of insight from the business banking world to that. One of my early college professors always said, "There's three things, people, product, and process." And if we want to run and be fiscally responsible, and make money and save money, and keep moving our children forward, those are the three things that the bare minimum we need to keep in mind, is our people, our process, and our product, the product being graduates and education. I value the input from our community members and would appreciate your vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kontos?
You know, back in, we were talking earlier, in 1991, I found myself here in Stevens Point. Unlike Jeff, I'm not a townie. I came here to take a job at the university, and after a few years, it was time for me to move on somewhere else. And rather than do that, I realized that I had found a place that I had fallen in love with. This is the community that I wanted to be in, this is the place that I wanted to eventually find my wife and marry and start a family, which I have done, and I thank God every day that I have such a wonderful family, and I have a wonderful community to be in. I chose to stay here because this is the place that I wanted to invest my time in, this is the place that I wanted to raise my family in and for them to call home. Back where I come from in Detroit, we don't have a lot of that. This is the kind of place that we really ought to be proud of, and for us to continue to grow and develop and really prosper, we need to have a good vibrant school district. We need to have a good base of well-educated students that are graduating, that are choosing to live here and to raise their families here, and we need to attract other families that are coming to the district as well. It would be an honor to be able to serve with Amy and Jeff, and after you cast your votes for them, I would appreciate you casting one more for me, as well as, there are other members of the board that are in the room here tonight. It is really a wonderful group of people, and having the right mix, having the right tools in that toolbox, as I mentioned before, is really important, and that's your choice. It is which one of us are going to be the best ones to sit on that, around that table. And I think as you look at the folks that are up here, you have a good cross-section of those citizens really who want to step forward and have a great world-class school district. So I'm just honored to have the opportunity to be able to run for the first time for public office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ebel?
Dan, you know that there's a law that says that after 20 years, you're an honorary townie.
Halfway there.
It has really been an honor to serve this district for the last three years, and it has been interesting, challenging at times, but always very, very rewarding, because it's important work. I am very dedicated to this community. Full disclosure, by the way, I have no children in the school district. I don't have any relatives in the school district, and I don't have any relatives that work for the school district. But I am passionate about education, I'm passionate about this community. The work that I do in this community is to build the wealth of this community by developing businesses, and in order to do that, you need to develop the citizens of the community, and that starts with a good, strong public education system. And I am very, very proud of the Stevens Point area public school district, and the schools that we have here are outstanding, and we are known throughout the state as having just an exceptional school district. I would be honored to serve on the board another term, especially with Amy and Dan would be great, and again, we have done some tremendous work in the last year or two. There is a lot of work left to do. I'm very much looking forward to working with the community and understanding your vision for education in the Stevens Point area and where you want to take this school district. And we'll do that through the process of the strategic plan, and you will hear a lot more of that here in the future. So thank you, thank you all for being here, and thanks for your efforts, too.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for time, their time and energy they've invested in running for school board and for participating in this forum. We hope you, as candidates, can state a talk with our constituents who are sitting in the audience. We need to be out of the building by 8 o'clock, however. I think they deserve a round of applause for participating. A special thanks to the League members for their assistance in hosting the forum, we certainly couldn't do it without you. We'd like to thank Sarah Thoreau, who is our videographer from Community Access TV Channel 94, 984, for taping this forum. And as Christine has said, there's information on the table about when the show will be aired on Community Access, so please pick one up for yourself and for your friends and neighbors and relatives. Thank you to the staff of the Portage County Public Library for their assistance in allowing the use of the facility. Thank you for your attendance and attention, and please remember to vote on April 5th. Your vote counts. Thank you.
For more information, visit the League of Women Voters website, lvspa.wi.lvnet.org.